You know about Tara, she works at home, some insurance company. And well, as a nurse, but she makes some calls every so often checking up on these patients or somebody.
All right, it's 5:00 PM. We'll go ahead and get the land bank meeting started. Not really an agenda. One of the reasons why I wanted to have one was a tax sale coming up. I think we need to decide whether we're going to take those properties into the land bank that don't sell at the tax sale. I think the county would like that information. Anyone has any thoughts on that, taking them all in that don't sell?
Well, here's my thought, again, I'm just one commissioner of course, but it's easier to just take the whole group through the ones that might need demolition and the city and county work together as far as the cost of the demolition and landfill fees, et cetera, like I know it's time to probably move forward and get this done. And hopefully, year or two years now, we'll have some very nice lots of people want to build houses on. And if we don't, they're just going to keep coming back to the tax sale and tax sales, we've got to do something different. So, I think some of these have been on there a couple, two or three times already. And if somebody else buys them, they just sit there, so it's time, I think, this county and the city and the land bank take a different approach to these substandard lots and structures, so, my opinion.
And, I'm not on the board, but I would agree with Commissioner Harris is that, in my opinion, the positive part of taking all the properties is that you can really work towards bigger change. So, and I get up there and draw it on the board, but I'll just say it, so, say this year, there's two or three houses on one block that's on the sale. And then, next year, there's a house on that same block that's on sale. And then, next year, down the road, and you start accumulating larger pieces of a block, and then you can make make huge change. So, by taking all the properties, you build them up to where you can renovate neighborhoods. And we're not talking about just one house, we're talking about actually renovating and changing the way neighborhoods look. Which in turn increases property values, and then things, you know, change.
Are all the properties in town? Well, this would be the only, the in-town properties, because we wouldn't have any right to the...
Out of town, yeah, you'd just be taking the in-town ones. And, and again, the problem, the reason why, again, you know, we talk about, we talk about this is because, you know, one of the problems that you've had in the past in talking with Mr. Meeks and some of the commissioners is your specials makes it, the specials on the properties make it to where they don't sell. And then, they're, they're, they're on the tax rolls, they don't sell, and then, you know, you end up, they're just staying there. And so, by this, you know, you waive the specials and you take on the properties, and therefore, we're able to, you know, really do something with them. And make, make significant change in the community, so.
And I think the city chose not to waive the specials.
Before, yeah.
Yeah, well, this time as well. Which I think would be the proper way of doing it, not waiving, and then, whatever doesn't sell, they can take into the land bank.
That's sure.
But, if you're not going to run any of them through the sale process, with specials on there, if you get several thousand dollar specials on there, they're not going to sell, in general.
Right.
And they're going to be on a tax sale in two years from now with more specials. So, my recommendation to this board here, to ask the city commissioners to waive those specials and get this property in an active role.
So, and I wish, she was here for the county, the way Justin explained it to me was, they have to go to the tax sale, no matter what.
Well, I, it says in here that acquisition of properties, number one is access acquisition at tax foreclosure auction. Property will be acquired through the following methods and any other method approved by the FSLB Board of Trustees. One, acquisition at tax foreclosure auctions. Two, donations from private entities. Three, bank foreclosures. Four, internal city-county transfers, and then five market purchases, so.
So, you're suggesting, John, saying needs to go to the tax sale, and the city could consider waiving the specials?
I mean, I, whatever the proper mechanism is to do it, I don't know. And so, I can get with Bob or Martin, get with Bob or Justin to see if we, I don't know, if we waive them, do they have to go to the tax sale? I don't even, I think the main question is, whatever doesn't sell, is the land bank willing to take in? Or, if they don't have to go to the tax sale, we willing to take them all in, so.
Okay, I always, I'm in agreement with that, so, we've said two different things here. Our, I'm here to, one is that go through tax sale, and once again, we try to pick up whatever doesn't sell. In the past, that, that didn't work, as I recall, again, I, but Jim is saying, let's take them pre-tax sale or...
If we legally can, I don't know, we'll have to visit both farmer and our counselor as well. But, these tax sales very, don't work that well. You know, if someone else buys them for five dollars and they're set, and they said, and we're going to be talking about that same house two years from now, this city's going to be tearing it down for three thousand dollars. And here, we have an opportunity to move forward and possibly get that structure and remove it and that lot in a positive mode for the city of Fort Scott. All these are in the city, because we don't have a land bank in the county yet. I think something we should look at in the future, but...
So, walk me through the process again, Greg, you're being awful quiet over here. So, is it possible for the land bank to take it in, pre-sale, and then the city waive specials or whatever? Because, at this point, it's set up, and you guys have to remind me the details, so that you can't buy it for five bucks, you're going to have to buy it for whatever's on it, or whatever price is set, is that correct?
Well, they have an option.
Yeah, but I thought there was a minimum starting amount based on...
That's it, if we don't waive assessments.
If you don't waive the assessments.
Yeah.
If there's no assessments on it, you could buy it for a buck.
Yeah.
If you, if, if so.
With assessments on there, it could start for four thousand, three thousand, whatever the assessment is. But the other one, with that one, can be bought for five dollars, so.
I think we just need to go with Bob or Justin, because it's my understanding if we kept assessments on there, and of course, most of them wouldn't sell, then at that point, they're offered, and then the assessments could be waived and put into the land bank. But if they can be waived before and put in the land bank, then that would be...
Yeah, we need to get legal counsel on that.
But I mean, I, I think, we just need to decide whether we're willing to take them in to the land bank.
Well, I, I've got a question, I got that question into Justin me right now, about can we take these properties before the tax sale? He hasn't answered me yet, but... I will bring up, I mean, if I can, I'll bring up a few other things. You guys asked me to kind of look at this, these documents and come up with, go through here and find some, some areas that I felt that needed to be changed. Mr. Mayor, can I go ahead and talk about those? So, a couple of things, first of all, obviously, we've, we've discussed this in detail last time. I, I truly believe, in my opinion, that the members that sit on the board need to be individuals other than the city commissioners. My, my recommendation is to have a city commissioner, a county commissioner, a ready representative, which at this point is, is Mr. Motley. Have a, help me out here, Mark. We had a real estate agent, a developer, a attorney, and a, what was the other one?
Secretary.
No, he was going to be treasurer, there's going to be real estate, developer...
I'll bet it may be contractor, maybe?
Contractor.
Attorney, and there was one more, we always did...
Citizen at large, is there a...
Citizen at large, no, yeah, the citizen at large, right there, there he is, right there.
You didn't say large citizen.
No, I said citizen. Literally said his name too, so, citizen at large, and it's an attorney, a real estate agent, just lost it again, county, city, ready, and then, a developer, those seven people.
I really don't think there's a developer in town, under the strict definition. There's something, there's, hasn't been a development in the county for a long time.
But we'd get a contractor. You like Carl Scan, maybe, or Jack, or somebody, I don't know. Is that just an ideal, like with Mr. West? Yeah.
So, I personally like the four at large with a weighted scale of, you know, I say if we, depend on who fills out an application to come in, I don't want to limit ourselves, but I'd love it to just say four at large with preference to a real estate lawyer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just think those areas give expertise to the land bank in certain areas regarding questions and concerns, we already have a banker, so.
So, how do, how do you select at large, the other, the existing board members select the at large?
Yeah, most of our other boards are, you know, send out letters of interest, which I think we can do tonight at the city meeting, and then it'll come back to the land bank to recommend to the city.
Like an application process, like you do with the other boards?
Yeah.
Letters, letters of interest.
But, okay, yeah. At this point, I would like to tell Mr. Campbell that he should be watching when that's public, so you can send in your letter of interest to serve on the committee, please. The other thing, reading in here, building lot and purchase cost, there's actually something in here that says it's ten dollars for a front edge. So, I don't know, I mean, so, for example, a seventy-foot front edge lot would cost seven hundred dollars. I don't know if you, I mean, to me, I would make it a flat fee of like a thousand dollars. Call it good, that way, you know, we're not out there saying, well, that lot's forty, so it's four hundred, but then that's seven hundred, and this... I would just make it a flat fee of a thousand and say, we're good. But that's just another opinion of mine, making it easier. And then, there also something in here about, on the properties, having an engineer sign off on it. Or no, excuse me, where was it? Having somebody sign off on the plans. And I don't think it says, I would recommend that it be at least somebody that's, somebody that understands building codes and proper construction, so, maybe a, maybe a certified engineer or somebody like that. It's in here, I can't find where it's at, but to sign off on the plans of the developer before the, the lot can be, or before the property can be developed.
That could just go through the codes department. I'm trying to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, in here, it talks about, I thought it said an engineer, but I don't know, it, it could go through the codes department, that's fine, I'm just bringing that up, that you might want to...
Because they're supposed to submit a set of plans that they're going to build in the city.
Yeah, I just, for like, for example, if the Eagle Block Building would have not collapsed, you wouldn't want the codes department signing off on those plans in the building, you'd probably want an engineer to come in and go, okay, here are some structural things that we see, that, that's what I'm seeing on this.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
But that gets into the financial ability of the board.
I think houses and buildings are more in the hands of architects than they are of engineers. I, I think the architect is, is the one that should sign off probably.
I'm fine with it, I just, I saw it in here, and so I wanted to bring it up, that we probably should look at that and consider who and how much we want approved, or how much we want that a part of the process, so.
All right, does anyone have anything else? If not, I mean, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the tax sale properties into the land bank, getting with legal, whether we do it before the tax sales and waive assessments, or having to go through the tax sale afterwards. Willing to accept all those city properties into the land bank.
I'm second that motion.
Can I ask one more discussion question? So, is there a cost involved in this, and do we have the resources to do it? You talked donations into the land bank too.
They will be city properties that will be, I'm trying to say the right word, it will be, yeah.
City property.
Yeah. Right, land bank property, yeah.
We'll have to start, you read that, as an organization, they go out and ask for donations and things, to raise funds to help do that.
The only expense should be the, the market.
Marketing?
The market report done by the title company, but
Yeah.
The ones that the tax sales are just already done for the sheriff's deed.
Yeah.
So, there really shouldn't be no expense there.
No, and, and you brought up finance, financing the land bank, and so, this is probably where I would bring up a suggestion as well. Your recent, when is it?
Sale.
Sale, that's good, yeah, okay. The recent sale of your, your building out in the industrial park, I would make a recommendation that you take some of those funds and put into the land bank, so we can use it for those type of, for those type of expenses. You know, I, if you were looking at fifty thousand dollars to put in there to cover all of your extents, your costs and expenses, it's a good price to start, and then obviously, you have the fees that you're going to charge developers after, and you should, you just, you can retain that and build that up to where, if you have to tear a house down, if you've got the funds there to tear the house down, then we're not coming back on the city and saying, hey, I need, or the county and saying, hey, we need funds to tear this house down, or we need funds to, to pay for these deeds, so. I, I would make that recommendation as well, to talk about that tonight.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Jim Harris.
Yes.
Greg Motley.
Yes.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
You know, when you take property in, you really should have a plan, and this is something that I launched in the Joplin Regional Area. The closest, most successful one is in Douglas County. And this is a, a vehicle by which you can create quality, affordable housing in perpetuity. The problem with the government building housing and then selling it is then it goes to a market price, and then, and then if you build housing and then you rent it, then the quality dissipates because people don't have anything invested in it. This is a vehicle to take care of both incentives. So, you, you, and, and the example I used was building a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, sixteen-hundred square foot, three bedroom, two bath, quality family housing in Fort Scott. You take one of the lots that we've demolished here, and you build it on there. And you get donations from charities, like the, and I've, I've kind of got the, a community foundation geared up to support this, because it's, it's something perpetual that, that works for the community for a long time. And then, you, you talk to the trades, the trade classes in town, like the community college and the high school. They provide free labor to build this house, so then all you can do is finance the building materials. So, you can, you can get into that same house for a hundred and ten thousand dollars in the example I used. And you sell it for a price around that or slightly above. And the stipulation is, is that the land bank gets a monthly check for a land lease. And how you control the property is you don't sell the land, you sell the building. And then, you have a lease at a nominal amount every month. And Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac will go along with this, banks will go along with this, so you can get conventional financing on this. And the contract says, we have to sell it for X price. Unless we get approval for an addition, or add in a fence, or a swimming pool, or something like that, it's approved, that adds to your value, and then that increases the contract price. A, a person who would not be able to afford that house normally gets a great deal on a house. They build equity by paying down the mortgage, or perhaps by improving the property. And then, it resells at another affordable price. And then, you build this inventory, I think Lawrence, Douglas County has over two hundred houses that are selling at an affordable price every time they sell. And so, you build this large stable of quality housing. And we can, we can watch the quality because we maintain ownership of the land. And so, we can go in anytime and say, uh-uh, you're not putting that motorcycle in the living room, dude, you know, get, get that out of there. So, you got that kind of control. So, it's, it's just a vehicle that makes a lot of sense, the incentives are all in the right place. The problem with a lot of government programs is the incentive's in the wrong place, and people just do what they want, and then, then the property dissipates. Or the property accelerates in price, and then, you know, what do you got? So, so, I, I love this vehicle, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can use something like Healthy Bourbon County. You know, they can get designated a community land trust. Craig has experience with this process, he and John Hill did it with a couple of houses on Eddie, not too long ago. So, to me, this, this is a direction we can go with these properties that we're taking back to create a long-term affordable plan to develop housing in Fort Scott. That's our most critical need, after the hospital's signed up, quality housing's our most critical need, affordable. So, three-bedroom, two-bath, sixteen-hundred square feet, that range is what we need, so. So, I guess I would like permission to explore this further, create, create the vehicle, apps, you know, nail it down. This is the entity that's going to get certified as the land trust. And here's how it's going to work, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be foolish to not let you explore it, it sounds like you already started.
Well, I've already done it once, so.
Right.
So, Greg, if, if, if a Healthy Bourbon County Action Team was the land trust person, the, the land bank, they would basically do all the land bank stuff? Or there'd still be a land bank, they would just work?
The land bank works with that, so the land bank owns property, demolishes, erases the specials, then they donate to the community land trust to build a house on that property. So, then, the community land trust becomes the owner of the simple ground, and they retain ownership for the life of that property until the land trust is dissolved, so, hopefully, which is never.
There's a separate board with this?
Yeah. And, and again, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, we have charitable organizations that already exist, and we don't need to create another entity. Just has to be some, an entity that we know has the best interest in Bourbon County and Fort Scott, in my...
So, the Healthy Bourbon County, or Mr. Campbell, would submit plans to the land bank for us to take action to put it in to the community land trust?
Yeah, and they, they preload it, they'd get all these dominos lined up with the trades, with, with, you know, the land bank would say, hey, Healthy Bourbon County, here's a lot, develop a plan. We got the financing through John Hill, and we got, you know, here's all the dominos lined up, then we deed the property and they go. And do you think you can sell a brand-new sixteen-hundred square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath home for a hundred and twenty-five in this county?
Uh, yeah.
All day.
All day, yeah. It's a great idea.
Well, you know, I mean, years back, there was several builders, back in the seventies, that were building those, stamping them out left and right. Johnny Gross was one of them, and he came through here and put a bunch of them on the ground and made a pretty fair go at it, so, there's buyers.
But those are one time, and now they're, now they're market.
Sure.
And people may or may not have taken care of them, this is, goes to...
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying, there was, there was takers for them then.
Right, takers for them. There's going to be takers for them now.
Right.
That's why people don't want to move to town.
Right.
Very few starter homes.
Very, very, very few starter homes.
Quality, quality starter homes.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to have you look into that further.
Any hesitation or reservations about this?
I think it's a great idea. Move forward, try to develop some of these properties, yeah.
My one question would be, clarifying, who is... My one question would be, clarifying who, so if the property at the land bank deeds it over to Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, and you said board would be in charge of it, or how, you know, so, so who would be in charge of making sure that those properties, for the long term, those properties were upheld?
Well, that, that, that's the role of the community land trust.
Okay.
That, you know, the land bank is just a vehicle to get them into the, into the process, that's all the land bank does. And so, the, the entity that becomes the community land trust, their board governs this. And it becomes pretty simple, just collecting the monthly rent, which is minimal, and then, doing some annual inspections to make sure the property's being maintained, and then dealing with the homeowner when they get ready to sell, so.
Still a fee that's paid to the land bank, or there's no fee?
Well, that's, that can be completely negotiated, you know. The idea is, is to keep the house affordable, so any, any fees you're at's going to, you know...
Well, I was just saying, for like demo and stuff, just to, so we have the, so the land bank has the money to demo, and so, unless, with the trust demo?
No, the...
No, okay.
No, I mean, I, I think what you have to do is let the trust invest every dollar that they receive from grants and et cetera, donations into the property itself, because you want them building as many houses as you possibly can.
And it doesn't have to be a demo house, it could be just, it could be a, a simple renovation, quick...
Yeah, those, that's not as clean, you know, but it could be.
Okay.
No, I mean, technically, you can, but I, I wouldn't recommend that at all, let's, let's not mess with the commercial market. You know, the idea is quality housing.
So, the land trust, I'm sorry?
Right, yeah, exactly.
It would review what the land bank has and make the decision what properties they want to develop? It certainly won't be every property we have.
Well, I mean, ideally, yes, I mean, because, well, and I don't know why you couldn't unless, you know, you know, a lot of times, the surrounding properties mitigate against, you, you build a new house, you don't create any value because nobody wants to live there, you know?
To me, it's almost two separate entities, and the land trust would just come to the land bank with a proposal, just like Joe Blow out on the street saying, hey, this is what I want to do with the property.
Right, yeah.
Then the land bank could say, great plan, wonderful, yes, we'll give you the property. Just like if Joe Blow came up and said, hey, I want, I want to get these four lots and build on them, here's my plan, we could say the same thing for them. Yeah, great plan, wonderful, build those homes, it'd be the same process.
Or the two landowners on the side want to take over the property and, and purchase the property, we have a lot of to fend off.
Does that need to be approved by the city commission, this additional board, or...
I don't think so, I think it's
Okay.
I think it's just something separate that, I think it'd be nice to...
Again, I don't think we want to create a new board, I think we want to use an organization that exists.
So...
And this won't be, will, will it be apt for somebody to say it's direct competition with market? Like, you know, if I wanted to go out and build houses and sell them?
Yeah, how many building permits did you issue in the last five years?
Thirty-seven, I don't know.
No.
But I'm just asking the question, because
Zero.
Here's the reason I'm asking the question, is because, you know, there's other areas where the city's trying to do things, or, you know...
Well, and, and that's just it, I mean, there's a lot that just sold next door to Mark. You, you don't want that, you don't want to support that for community land trust. That's not a blighted area or an area that's, you know, the whole issue is, is that you build a new house, and it's, it appraises for a lot less than your cost to build, so how do you do that? That's, that's our big problem in town. And so, especially in infill lots. And so, what we're, it, it's kind of a balance because you, you can't do it in neighborhoods that are, that are falling down because you, you, that gap's going to be too big. And you can't do it in brand-new neighborhoods, or newer neighborhoods, or at the lake. So, you, you're finding that balance, you know, lots on Horton, or, you know, lots on Margrave, et cetera.
Well, I, I think builders could come to the land bank and say, hey, I found I'm building, you know, that's something the land bank would have to weigh in.
Yeah, sure.
If they want a piece of it, there's something there for them too.
Yeah, but I guarantee builders are not going to be lining up the next several years to build new houses in Fort Scott. Under the current conditions.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I mean, I was thinking from a, a legal side of it, is that...
Well, and, and I would point to, and, and we can go up and visit Douglas County and see how they manage those issues, because Douglas County is a rapidly growing county, and they have market builders there. But, you know, they're, again, they're doing infill that these builders don't, they don't, they want to go on fresh, fresh dirt, and they don't want to do infill stuff, and so.
Good deal.
Does anyone have anything else? Nope.
Well, hey, last time we met, I'm just saying this, Craig, you, you were sitting up here, had some ideas, do you want to, do you want to say anything? I mean, okay.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate you.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I had one other question. If you're going to develop this, or, and bring it, or you think this is ready to go now?
You know, I just need to kind of work, I just need to find an organization that wants to domicile it. And, and, you know, once you get a structure set up, it's, it's not that difficult.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Lindsey Locke.
Jim Harris.
Yes.
Greg Motley.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes.